I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting December 17th, 2024. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmembers Aguilar Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Mayor Portem Soto and Mayor Patino.
Here. First item on the agenda is the public comment period. Do we have any requests to speak?
We do not, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The City Council will now recess to a closed session and will reconvene to the regular portion of the agenda at 5:30 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please read the titles of the closed-session items?
Yes, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to California Government Code 54957.6.
That's it? Okay, so we will return at 5:30. I would like to note that the interpreter for this evening is Mrs. Arséniga. Mrs. Arséniga, could you please raise your hand in the back? Please ask her for any listening device if you would like interpretation services. I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of December 17th, 2024. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Mayor Portem Soto is absent this evening. I'm Mayor Patino.
Aye, here. Mr. Watson, City Attorney, would you like to give the closed-session report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. With respect to the closed session for labor negotiations, instructions were provided to the negotiators with respect to outstanding issues between the bargaining units. No further report is necessary.
Thank you. We have a special group that we're invited tonight to sing, and if the choir could please come in here. That'll be fine. This is a special treat we didn't count on tonight, but they were singing out in the hallway, and so we would like them to sing a couple of songs for everyone.
Hello, everyone. We are the Light of the World Children's Choir. We hope you enjoy our holiday songs. Oh, holy night, the stars are brightly shining. It is the night of the dear Savior's birth. Long lay the world in sin and error pining, till He appeared and the soul felt its worth. A thrill of hope, the weary soul rejoices, for yonder breaks a new and glorious morn fall underneath. Oh, hear the angels' voices, oh night, divine, oh night, when Christ was born. Oh night, oh holy night, oh night, divine.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad, y un próspero año y felicidad.
Y felicidad, y felicidad.
I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. Bu ma fu ma ya bu wa ba.
Pim pam bua zu.
Bu ma fu ma ya bu wa ba.
Pim pam bua zu.
African.
Bu ma fu ma ya bu wa ba. Ba wa ba, pim pam bua zu.
Pam bua zu, pam bua zu.
I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart.
From the Philippines?
Maligayan Pasco.
Maligayan.
Maligayan Pasco.
Maligayan.
Maligayan Pasco. Maligayan, Bagon Taon.
Bagon Taon, Bagon Taon.
I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart.
Let's do one more from France.
Du elu eli bonani.
Eli bonani.
Du elu eli bonani.
Eli bonani.
Du elu eli bonani. Du elu eli bonani.
Im bonani, im bonani.
I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart.
Let's do one more, one more little verse of their favorite, and my favorite.
Silent night, holy night, all is calm, all is bright. Brown young virgin, mother and child, holy infant, so tender and mild. Sleep in heavenly peace, sleep in heavenly peace. We are the Light of the World Children's Choir.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our first order of business is the annual presentation of the 2024 Light, Sites, and Holiday Nights Award winners. And Mr. Posada, would you like to do the honors?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and all of our residents that are here today. Thank you for coming out. So I was quite surprised when I read the flyer today that this is our 28th Light, Sites, and Holiday Night Award. And I can remember back when one of our staff members, Kristen Tucker, said, "We should recognize all of the people that put lights out for the holidays." And it kind of got kicked off from there with the Parks Commission joining in and being part of that. So tonight, I'm happy to be able to present to you the 28th Annual Light, Sites, and Holiday Nights Decorating Contest that was completed this past week. I want to thank two of our commissioners that went out and were the final judges, Commissioner Gudino and Commissioner Lopez, went out in the dark hours of the evening, driving around town, looking at lights. So as a result of that, we have our little slideshow that will show you some of our winners. So I have Jeanette Blanco is going to help me. Jeanette is going to help hand out the certificates. And then we also have our yard signs. We're not sure who was able to make it here tonight to actually accept them, but we're going to go down the list. So do I just hit the thingy here?
That's a video.
Okay, so yeah, let's just go ahead and play the video then. And you get to see some of these areas.
PG&E loves this time of year for us, you know, they just really good. You're going to see some families here that did not win, but obviously just wanted to give everybody a little bit of screen time.
Thank you. I want to thank our city our city communications team for getting that put together and shooting the video. So let's begin by recognizing the Vargas and the Meza family at 1319 North College Drive for the best use of lights. And again, I'm not sure if families are here, but we want to recognize them. Are they here?
Yeah.
Come on up. Jeanette has her certificate over there, and you get a yard sign that we would like you to put up out in front of your house to let everybody know that you were a successful competitor in this year's event. So thank you very much. The best lawn design was the Castillo family at 125 West McElany Avenue. Are the Castillos here? Nice. Congratulations. Yeah, picture time, if you want to do pictures, great. For the best holiday theme is the Grave family. Is that correct? Are they here? Yes. All right. Come on down. That's at 804 North College Drive. And the best business display this year was the Village Town Homes at 1001 West Cook Street. Is there? Yes, great. They're here. Everybody's here. Thank you very much. And the best overall winner this year is the Cosmala family at 801 South Miller Street, and they're also a Hall of Famer. Are they here? Come on down. Congratulations. Also, real quickly, we have these individuals that are in the Hall of Fame, which just basically means that they decorate every single year, and we couldn't recognize them every single year as one of the best groups. So we created the Hall of Fame, and they are Michael B. Clayton &amp; Associates at 400 East Orange Street, the Dickerson family at 104 Palm Court Drive, I see Mr. Dickerson is here, the Bernard family at 228 Linda Drive, the Hosea family at 225 South Oakley Avenue, and the Mariscal family, 2442 Wailea Court, my neighbors. So I like to give them a plug. And the honorable mentions this year, we have the Náales family at 314 West Harding. Look, excuse me, the Zaragosa family at 337 South Western Avenue, and the Tovar family at 1108 South Western Avenue. So these are our honorable mentions. Our judges had a real difficult time getting out there and picking out everyone, but we want to thank them for doing that. So thank you, judges, and thank you all for decorating your houses and kind of getting into the holiday spirit. We do have a special event coming up on the 21st of December at 5:00 PM at Machado Plaza, and that's located on West Chapel Street in the 200 block of West Chapel. We'll be doing our first annual holiday market, and so we have several vendors coming out that day. So if you have an evening and you want to go out and do something fun, come by. There'll be crafts and campfires and some more activities for the kids. Also, the trolley tickets, I understand, have been sold out, but the City Trolley will be doing a tour of the light houses that you saw tonight. We also have a map available. There are a few copies in the back if you wanted to get that map and see where all the residents are. And it's also available on the city's website. So again, I want to thank everybody for their help, the staff for putting this together, commissioners for being our judges, and certainly the community for taking the time to decorate. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank all that helped in making and sharing the Christmas spirit with everyone in Santa Maria. That's so important this time of the year. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the certification of the canvas of the general municipal election. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title and give the report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Adoption of a resolution accepting the Santa Barbara County Clerk Recorder's certificate of the results of the official canvas of the November 5th, 2024 General Municipal Election and reorganization of the City Council. A little bit of background on this. A consolidated statewide general election was held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, in accordance with state law and Santa Maria Municipal Code Section 2-25-02. The election was called for the purpose of electing one mayor, two members of the City Council, one each in District 1 and District 2, one city clerk, and one city treasurer for four-year terms. The Santa Barbara County Clerk Recorder had 28 days following the election to complete the ballot count, certify the election results, and provide such to the governing body. The Santa Barbara County Clerk Recorder has completed the official canvas of the general municipal election and has provided the results to the city clerk for presentation to and for adoption by the City Council. The results confirm that the following candidates received a majority of votes cast in order to be duly elected to a full term of four years. Mayor Alice M. Patino, City Council District 1, Carlos Escobedo, City Council District 2, Gloria Flores, City Clerk Patty Rodriguez, and City Treasurer Teresa Hall. Staff is recommending adoption of the resolution, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on Tuesday, November 5th, in conjunction with the statewide general election, and accepting the county clerk recorder's certificate of the results of the canvas, and follow standard procedures to reorg the City Council this evening.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak? We do not.
We do not.
I'll bring this back to the council for discussion or a motion. Mr. Cordero?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the recommendations and approve the election.
So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Soto is absent this evening. Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion passes. With that, we will bring the process of reorganizing the City Council. First, I would, my privilege to read and present a proclamation to outgoing council member Mike Cordero. It was buried under all my papers here, thank you. Whereas, Mike Cordero, a 52-year resident of the City of Santa Maria, compiled decades-long record of public service as a police officer, board member, and supporter of many nonprofits, and through three terms as a City Council member. And whereas, after a distinguished 36-year career with the Santa Maria Police Department, Mr. Cordero ran for and was elected to the Santa Maria City Council in 2008, serving from 2008 to 2012. And being re-elected in 2016 and 2020, served another eight years, all with a track record of dedication to local residents and issues. And whereas, Mr. Cordero advocated for increases in youth and recreation programs, advocated for downtown revitalization, opened a fifth fire station to better serve the community and support Measure U to maintain and enhance essential city services. And whereas, Mr. Cordero's impressive list of community service included being honored as a 2022 Celebrate Philanthropy Honoree, along with his wife Linda, Peace Builder of the Year from the People for Nonviolence Committee, Officer with the Santa Maria Elks Lodge 1548, in addition to serving as board member, commission member, and volunteer on many fundraising and community outreach events. And whereas, the members of the Santa Maria City Council and the city staff expressed their individual and collective appreciation to council member Mike Cordero for his dedicated service to the public and lasting contributions to the community. Now therefore, I, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaim that Mike Cordero is hereby recognized and commended for his dedicated service and extraordinary contributions to the Santa Maria community, and wish him and his family well in their future endeavors. Mr. Cordero, would you like to make any comments?
Yes.
I will give you more than three minutes.
Yes, I would. I'd like to thank the community for trusting me with their business. I appreciate all the support that I got from the many people in the community for all three of those elections. I look forward to spending a little more time with my wife, who's in the audience tonight. She doesn't come to every meeting, but she is here tonight, in case I need that moral support. And I welcome our new council member, Gloria Flores, and I sincerely hope that everybody in the community will give her the same warm welcome that I got when I came in 2008, and help her to become the best council member that she possibly can, because we need that in the community. And to Gloria, if she were here, I would say that thank you for your input to the county, I mean, excuse me, to the city as a council member. To Maribel, thank you for your input and what I learned from you. Carlos, thank you, sir, for keeping going. And I noticed that Dr. Moats is in the audience. I would thank him too. I remember when he left, I was kind of sad that he ended up leaving, and he wasn't gone very long, but nevertheless. And I thank my wife, who's here. And I thank you. And that's it. That's all I had to say, but I would like to go out of order and give my report out. On the 20th of last month, I attended a PG&E speech up in San Luis. On the 21st, that was the night away meeting and the ribbon cutting at the, I don't even know how to pronounce this. It's a Filipino restaurant in the 2000 block of South Broadway, December the 4th. I was at the tree, the lighting of the tree. I also attended the Santa Maria Parade of Lights. On the 10th, I was at the badge pinning for the Santa Maria Police Department. And on the 11th, I attended the 3CE board meeting, right sitting in this chair, virtually. And that would be all I have. And I thank you very, very much, all the community that's here, and I look forward to whatever's going to take place next. We'll do something with the church or something like that. So thank you all for being here.
Ms. Aguilar Hernandez?
I want to thank you for all the years of service. I've had the pleasure of serving on the City Council with you, and you were very welcoming when I was a brand-new council member, so I want to thank you for that and your wife. And really, for, you know, the years of service as a police officer, sitting on those boards, and just the time that you've given to us, you know, at cost of your family. So I really want to thank you for that, because it means a lot to the community. So thank you once again.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to say thank you, thank you to your service to Santa Maria, and it was an honor to serve, to share this space, and your willingness to engage in direct and frank conversation. I think that's very valuable, and I know that you will be around, because you have a heart to serve Santa Maria.
And Mr. Cordero, I certainly want to thank you for your service, and especially sitting on the council, we got to know each other better. But your clear thinking on issues, and you always represented what I think is the heart of Santa Maria, and always, you were always, you may not maybe agree necessarily with it, but it was always in the best interest of Santa Maria, and you always listened, more than I would have listened on many instances, but you were always listening, and I appreciate that. And I think we all learned something from one another when we served. And I think we all learned something from one another when we served together. Thank you, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you.
Thank you. of the city council. And so right now, for the oath of office as mayor, my granddaughter Gabriela Patino will be administering the oath of office, and I would like to ask my other three grandchildren to please come up here with me.
I state your name.
Alice Patino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, both foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. obviously, but it's still a little unnerving. It's very, very humbling to have your name on a ballot, and as Mr. Cordero was saying earlier, and have people in Santa Maria trust you, and hopefully that you make good decisions. You're not going to make everybody happy, but at least you make a lot of people happy. I want to thank my family for always being here and supporting me. I want to thank my husband, who is very, very supportive and never complains when I don't fix dinner, because he's a great cook. But I thank you so much. I thank the people of the city of Santa Maria. We have a great city, and we have so much to do, because we have to figure out how we're going to grow and where we're going to put all the schools. We're going to have to allow for about 30,000 more people coming to our community, whether we like it or not, and figure out where they're going to live, where they're going to shop, where they're going to go to school, and the playgrounds they're going to use. So we have a lot of things to do, the five of us sitting up here, in the next few years. And I want to thank you again very much. And now, we will go on. Councilmember Escobedo was elected to the city council District 1, and Mr. Escobedo, can you please step down and take your oath of office? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I instate your name.
I, Carlos Escobedo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, both foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About, I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Absolutely, Madam Mayor. How can I say it not to a microphone? First of all, I would like to acknowledge, as I mentioned, Councilmember Cordero for his years of service to our community. It was an honor to serve in this same space, and as I mentioned, it was great to be able to engage in direct and frank communication and dialogue with him. Also, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Councilmember Flores, with whom I hope to work as a team to make the best for Santa Maria. More than four years ago, we began an adventure together, and today we will continue this movement to transform the way we do politics in Santa Maria. And for this reason, I would like to start by saying thank you to my constituents for their support, because they reaffirm their trust in me to represent them. You made it happen. I'm truly honored to once again be given the responsibility to be in your voice on this council, and I will continue to work on your request, defend your interests, and promote the improvements that we need to make our city a better place for our families. When I started this project, I knew it was not going to be easy. There are going to be a lot of challenges, but also, I was sure and convinced that having the support of you, we're going to be able to do it, the people. And now there are still many things that needs to be done in the city and in District 1, but I'm convinced that together, we can achieve it. Our transformation movement has had the objective to regain the trust and the faith of the community in politics, because today more than ever, we need representatives who are close to the people, representatives who put people before the same old way of doing politics, representatives who prioritize the majority of our community before or over personal interests and those of a small group. We must never forget that we own this position to Santa Marians. For me, the vote represents a fair and a sincere evaluation of the candidates. I want to thank not only the people that voted for me and my constituents, but everybody who voted, who exercised their right and civil duty to vote, and I'll do my best to represent everyone. Finally, I want to say thank you to my campaign team, my friends and volunteers who selfishly gave me their support and volunteered their time to make this happen. And it's a, it's a proverb that I keep in my mind all the time. You can go fast by yourself, but we can go farther together. And, voy en español.
Oh, that's right.
Ahora en español. Antes que nada, me gustaría hacer un reconocimiento al consejero Cordero por sus años de servicio a nuestra comunidad. Fue un honor compartir este espacio con usted y poder tener una conversión franca y directa. Felicito y doy la bienvenida a la nueva consejera Gloria Flores. Espero poder trabajar en equipo para hacer lo mejor para nuestra comunidad. Hace más de cuatro años comenzamos una aventura juntos, y hoy mediante su voto le damos continuidad a este movimiento de transformación de la vida política de Santa María. Y por esa razón me gustaría iniciar agradeciendo y reconociendo a todos los constituyentes por su invaluable apoyo, porque han refrendado su confianza en mí para que le siga representando. Ustedes han hecho esto posible. Sinceramente, me siento honrado de recibir nuevamente esta responsabilidad de ser su voz dentro del consejo, y les aseguro que no les refradaré. Seguiré trabajando en favor de sus peticiones, lucharé por sus intereses, y promoveré las mejoras que, no solamente para el Distrito 1, sino para toda la ciudad. Cuando inicié este proyecto hace muchos años, supe que no era fácil, que no iba a ser fácil, que iba a haber retos, pero también supe que no iba a ser imposible mientras tuviese el apoyo de ustedes, de la gente. Sé que hemos alcanzado mucho trabajando en equipo, pero también que hay mucho más por hacer, pero estoy convencido que juntos lo lograremos. Nuestro movimiento de transformación ha tenido como objetivo recobrar la fe y la confianza del pueblo en la política. Hoy más que nunca necesitamos representantes que sean cercanos a la gente, representantes que pongan intereses de la comunidad antes que personales o de un pequeño grupo, representantes que dejen a un lado la politiquería de siempre. Nunca debemos olvidar que este puesto se lo debemos a ellos. Para mí, el voto representa una evaluación justa y sincera de los candidatos, ya que a través de su voto libre y secreto decidieron quién les representará. No solamente quiero agradecer a las personas que me apoyaron y votaron por mí, sino a todas aquellas que votaron, que ejercieron su derecho a votar. Haré todo lo posible para poderle representar a todos. Finalmente, le agradezco a todo mi equipo de trabajo, amigos, y voluntarios que desinteresadamente me dieron su apoyo y tiempo para lograr que esto funcione, y esto se lograra. Y como dice un proverbio africano, solo llegas rápido, juntos llegaremos más lejos. Muchas gracias.
Now, San Luis Obispo County District Attorney Dan Dow will administer the oath of office to Gloria Flores, elected to the city council District 2. Ms. Flores, could you please come forward?
Madam Mayor and council, it's really an honor to be here in Santa Maria and administer the oath of office to Gloria Flores in this beautiful city of Santa Maria, our closest neighbor to the south of San Luis Obispo. If you would, Gloria, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Gloria Flores, do solemnly swear.
I, Gloria Flores, solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any medical reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You went the wrong way. You went the wrong way. It's on. Okay, so if you'd like to make any comments, Mr. Escobedo, I'll use up all your time.
I know. More than three minutes? No. I'm just kidding. I just want to thank everyone that came out today to support me. I want to thank my family, my husband, my campaign manager, he was my therapist, my counselor, my psychiatrist during my campaign. So, I want to thank him, my committee, the pastors that stood with me, I mean, they walked with me. I want to thank my friends and my family for giving so much of your time so that I could do what I felt that I was called to do, and that was to run for District Two. But most of all, I want to thank the constituents of District Two for voting for me and believing in me to do the job. And I want to thank all my friends here today that just showed me so much love and support when I was running my campaign. So, thank you, Santa Maria. I'm ready to work. Thank you so much.
We've got some things here at the front table. And so if you'd like to congratulate any of the elected officials, and please help yourself to the refreshments, and we will reconvene in about 15 minutes. Thank you. I know. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to reconvene the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to reconvene the meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Mayor Potenzot is absent this evening, and Mayor Patino?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the public comment. Madam Clerk, I have two people to speak for public comment. Mr. Klein, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Patino. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city officials and city staff. My name is Andrew Klein, proud member of Santa Maria Firefighters Local 2020. It's the season of hope, also referenced as waiting, anticipating, expecting. For the rest of this year and beyond, I remain hopeful. First, I'm hopeful that the City Council and the rest of the city decision-makers truly advocate for the improvements in the treatment and compensation of our firefighters. Despite the ups and downs from this past year alone, we never said no to our citizens when they called for us. That says something. It's proof that we are about the people. You cannot put a price on saving a human life. We do this every day. Second, I'm anticipating a motion to get back to the table and to start working together, finding solutions for our year-long expired contract. Costs for everything from health benefits to groceries have gone up, morale in our ranks has been at all-time low. We have also lost two firefighters to outside agencies this past year. That hurts us. However, our spirit and drive to save and serve our community has never left our minds and remains the highest priority. We love our community and take pride in what we do. Third, I'm eager to encourage and support our new city manager and council member, as they both, like the rest of you, have many issues to tackle. Welcome to Santa Maria. Here, you will find our firefighters are sincerely dedicated to save our community from peril and provide them with a top-notch work ethic and professional life-saving service in the most dire of circumstances. Our members have been going to bat for our community since 1913. I know you'll do the same for us. We appreciate you being with us. If you need anything, please reach out to us, and we love to work together to make our city better. On behalf of Local 2020, thank you for your devotion to the community, and have a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Hall, followed by Mary Jaco.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. Tonight, first, I want to congratulate Mayor Patino on being re-elected, Councilmember Escobedo on his reelection, and also want to publicly congratulate Councilmember Flores on her election, and thank former Councilmember Cordero, who's gone, I'm guessing, for all of his years of service. I would also like to publicly welcome our new city manager, Mr. Rollins, and congratulate Assistant City Manager Wu on completing his temporary assignment successfully as acting city manager. Let me remind you, I still represent the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Homeowners Team. Our Nesbit goal remains to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. The model lease has not adequately addressed the need for mobile home rent stabilization in Santa Maria, and it needs to be improved or replaced. Following the June 6, 2022, motion passed by this council, we've been attempting to do that. The planned outreach effort is now complete, but there is currently little evidence that the mobile home residents have actually benefited. Our work continues. In contrast, I'm pleased to report that on December 10, less than four months from when the issue was brought to their attention, the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors did unanimously pass an extension, all the way to October 25 of 2025, of the Senior Mobile Home Park Conversion Interim Urgency Ordinance. You will recall, this ordinance temporarily stops the inappropriate attempt to convert Delsiello Senior Mobile Home Park and any other senior park in the unincorporated Santa Barbara County to an all-age park. Four months. The same four months have passed since I brought this issue to the City Council. It's time for the city of Santa Maria to take up a similar action, to protect us senior mobile home park residents from similar inappropriate acts by greedy Santa Maria mobile home park owners. Once again, I request it be formally added to the City Council agenda. My final concern continues to deal with the continuing impasse between a city and our firefighters. I want to once again make an appeal, to make transparency regarding the contract negotiations which began 12 months ago. How can the impasse which was declared April 12 not have triggered the act of mediation? And if it did, please explain to me and all the citizens of Santa Maria why no suitable compromise has yet been found. Lack of compromise is putting public safety at risk. Happy holidays.
Mary Jaco. Good evening, Ms. Jaco.
Good evening. Good evening, and congratulations, councilmembers, old councilmembers, Mayor Patino. I'm here this evening. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I am speaking because I've been hearing that our firefighters, our Santa Maria City firefighters are in need of your attention. And I know firsthand how difficult the life of a firefighter family is. My husband was a firefighter for Vandenberg Air Force Base for over 30 years. Prior to that, he served in the US Forestry Service here up in Figueroa Mountain. So, families, firefighters are extremely close to their families. They care for their families, they want to support their families, and we all know what's going on in Santa Maria. These prices are just going where I don't know how people are buying these homes, you know? I mean, it's not our young people, it's not firefighter families that can afford it. So, I'm asking you, you know, think about 9/11 and how we felt, losing firefighters, police officers, people working in those towers. Our firefighters are so important to the safety of Santa Maria. I ask that you please listen to them and hear their concerns and support them. Thank you.
Mr. Watson, and we hear the concerns about our firefighters, can you explain about the purb violations that are...
Yes, ma'am, because the firefighters have issued a purb violation, and we are waiting for the mediation service to provide us a mediator. Thus far, we have not moved forward. So, it is entirely within the firefighters' hands to withdraw the purb violation, and we could potentially move forward. But at this point, the city cannot move forward, and I would not recommend it.
Okay. So, I think you've heard the explanation, and as soon as the purb violations are removed, we could go into mediation. Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I move.
I move. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendars. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the Centennial Gardens Apartments to be presented by the Department of Direct Finance, Xenia Bradford.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item in front of you is to consider adoption of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, California, approving the issuance of exempt facility bonds by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority to provide financing for the acquisition, construction, and development of 160-unit multifamily rental housing project generally known as Centennial Gardens. A little bit of background on this. Centennial Gardens, the borrower has requested that the California Statewide Communities Development Authority serve as the municipal issuer of tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue bonds on an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $50 million. There is... The location of this is located between, or in the corner of South Depot Street and West Babels Road, and there would be, this is just a tax-exempt process, there is no obligation for the city, all of the costs will be borne by the borrower.
Any questions from the council? Are there any requests to speak or written comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next item is another public hearing for the Belcress Senior Residences to be presented by interim Department Director of Community Development, Dana Eady, followed by a presentation from the Principal Planner with Urban Planning Concepts, Brian Schwartz.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. This evening, I'm going to be giving the staff presentation on the Belcress Senior Residences. This is a request for a general plan amendment, a rezone, a tract map, and a plan development permit.
Excuse me one minute. Our... They call them up here.
Monitors.
The monitors aren't working.
So, we're going to have to look at the...
So, we'll have to look at... Did we know that? We didn't know that. I should have... I didn't think too much when we did the holiday nights, but they're not working right now, so.
No. Oh, yes.
So, if you know the button to push. Okay, thank you.
Just turn it off.
Okay, here we go. Thank you.
They didn't say that was a requirement of City Council, sorry. Okay, great. So, this is the project site. It is a 14.43-acre site. It is located at 1571 East Main Street. It's east of Sway Road and north of Main Street. There is an existing single-family residence on the property. There's also orchards and some accessory structures on the property. It's surrounded by residential development to the north, to the southeast, and to the west of the site, and then Pioneer Valley High School is to the northeast of the property. So, the existing land use and zoning of the site is for single-family residential development with a lot size of 8,000 square feet, which equates to about four units per acre currently. The request is to change the land use designation and the zoning of the site to a medium-density residential zoning, which would allow for 12 dwelling units per acre. And this is the same zoning that is located to the southeast of the site. If you see that brown color on the map, it lines up with some existing zoning to the So, this is the proposed tract map for the project. It includes subdividing the property into 147 lots. 142 of the lots would be designated for the future development of homes, and the lots are a smaller lot size. So, this is intended to be a smaller lot development. The lots range in size from 2,040 square feet to 3,080 square feet. There are four common lots throughout the site for the private roads, utilities, and then some open space amenities. The open space amenities for the project are in the southwest corner of the site. It includes a clubhouse with a swimming pool, a spa, and outdoor seating areas, and there's also another area that's to the north, central north part of the property as well, and I'll go over those details in a future slide. The residential density would be 9.3 units per acre, which is below the 12-unit-per-acre maximum for this medium-density designation. And then, primary access to the site is from Main Street to the south with an emergency access onto Roland Drive that's to the north. So, this is...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
What did you say about the Roland? Is there an exit there you mentioned?
Yes, so, I can show you in another... Well, let me see if I can back up. I don't know how to do it.
Is that this Prus Drive?
So Main Street is to the south in this site. So that's the primary entrance and exit. There is an emergency access that is to the north onto Roland Drive, but that's proposed to be gated. It would only be for emergency access only into that neighborhood.
Thank you.
So this is the site circulation and parking. The subdivision is designed with traffic calming features throughout, and that includes ADA-compliant crosswalks with pavers, also street lighting at all of the main travel routes, and bollards for additional lighting. I also wanted to mention that this project is a senior project, so it would be for 55 and older. And all of the lots are proposed to be sold at market rate. So it's not a rental property. It would be, at this point, a for-sale project. The speed limits throughout would be a maximum of 15 miles per hour. Also, each lot would have two parking spaces. And then there's an additional 79 guest spaces that are spread throughout the subdivision. So the requirement is 145 spaces, and they've actually exceeded that quite a bit at 363. So there is a requested modification on this project to allow for a different standard to be used regarding the corner site visibility requirements. And the city's Public Works Department reviewed this request. It applies to only 27 of the lots in the subdivision, and it's the corner lots. So in this slide, it's where the shaded areas are. That is using a residential site distance triangle that Caltrans uses. And our Public Works Department reviewed that and found that it's acceptable. And so the shaded areas on this slide just show that there is adequate room for vehicles to make the corner turns and have a good site distance and be able to safely travel through the subdivision. The... So this is now moving into the plan development part of the project. So this is the detached style. There are two different styles of homes in this development. There's a detached style, which is more of the traditional single-family style home. And then there's also a duplex style. So this is the detached style. These are smaller homes. They range from one and two bedrooms. And they're in a colonial and farm style. They range in size, on the small end, from around 700 square feet to 750. And then the two-bedroom units are around 1,100 square feet in size. There is a request for a modification to the setbacks because this is a smaller lot type of development. Santa Maria doesn't really have this type of development currently. This is somewhat newer. And so the applicant is asking to reduce some of the setbacks in, to make this project feasible. So in the table here, there are, there's a request to reduce the front setback from 20 feet down to about five feet to eight feet. Same with the rear yards. It goes from about 10 feet, which is typical, down to five feet and eight feet. The sides are three feet and five feet. Typically, you see five feet and 10 feet. And then, as well on the corner, it reduces to three feet to five feet. And the planning commission did review this project back on November 6. We went over this in detail with them as well. They ultimately did recommend this for approval to your council. But there is discretion, you know, on this particular item. The reductions, like I said, do allow for this smaller lot type of development, and that's the main reason for the request. This is an example of the lot layout for some of the smaller detached homes, showing the landscaping and some of the amenities as well in the rear yard that could be placed there. When this went to planning commission, there were some questions about how small the lots are and whether you actually could have a decent area in the backyard to sit and, you know, barbecue and enjoy yourself. And so the applicant put this together to show how you could have a patio and some garden areas and things like that. It is intended to be, I mean, it is a smaller lot project. So there's intended to be low maintenance for the residents that are living there. But that's, I wanted to show this slide just so that you could see how it could potentially be developed in the future. This is a floor plan for one of the detached homes. It's the smaller one-bedroom home. It has, these units have a one-car garage with one parking space behind in tandem. So there's still room for two cars on the site. And this one is a one-bedroom with a half, a full bath and a half-bath as well. And then this is another example of a floor plan that's for one of the larger units, just over 1,000 square feet. And this one has, it could be a two-bedroom. It has a den option in it, and it's got a two-car garage. So these are the duplex model styles. And these are a little bit on the larger side. They do, most of them are two-bedrooms. There are some one-bedroom options, but the majority of the duplexes are two-bedrooms. They are in a very similar architectural style as the detached homes. And they are on larger lots. So most of these homes range in size from 1,300 square feet to around 1,500 square feet in size. And then similar to the detached lots, there is a request for a setback modification as well for these lots. For the front setback, it, the request is to have a six-foot setback and nine-and-a-half feet to the garage. The rear yard goes to eight feet. And then because these are duplexes, there would be a zero lot line in between the two, the two lots so that the duplexes share a wall. There's still a separation between them, but it'll look like they're basically one large unit. And then there's a five-foot setback on the, on the other side. So this is an example of the floor plan for the duplex. Again, it's a two-car garage, generally a two-bedroom unit with a two-full bath in it. This is a slide showing the clubhouse and some of the common areas. So on the left-hand side, that is the clubhouse. And it is 2,862 square feet in size. There's a, some of the outdoor amenities include a swimming pool, a spa, areas for seating, a bocce court, and a lawn just for recreation purposes. And then on the diagram on the right, that is another outdoor space that's located to, on the northern and central part of the property. And that includes a pet park, some areas to sit, I think some barbecue areas as well, and parking. These are the elevations for the clubhouse. They're very similar to the architecture for the rest of the development. It's intended to, you know, blend in and look as, look as one large project and be complementary to the homes. And then I just wanted to show this so you can see the colors and materials. There are six different color schemes. There's different types of stone veneer that are proposed on the homes and also different types of roofing as well. And then this is the landscaping plan for the project. The municipal code requires 20% of the lot to be landscaped. This project includes over 30% of landscaped areas throughout. And they're also proposing to install 272 trees. So a fairly significant amount of landscaping is proposed with the project. Environmental review was completed under the California Environmental Quality Act. A mitigated negative declaration was completed for the project, and it was circulated for a 30-day public review period. All of the environmental impacts were found to be less than significant, and no additional environmental review is required. And so these are all five of the staff recommendations. I won't read each one because they're, I mean, word for word, but it's to adopt a resolution to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program, adopt a resolution amending the general plan land use policy map to the medium-density residential land use, and then introduce for final reading, or first reading and continue to a future meeting in ordinance that amends the zoning of the property, adopt a resolution approving the tentative tract map, and also adopt a resolution approving the plan development permit. And I did want to mention the applicant is here, Brian Schwartz. He does have a presentation as well. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Okay, Mr. Schwartz? Mr. Schwartz?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Brian Schwartz, Urban Playing Concepts. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you this evening. I probably wouldn't have even submitted a presentation knowing if, knowing that Dana was going to do such a good job with her presentation. So there's, try not to be redundant with it. Do have some other images and a little bit of different information to show you. But do, before I begin, I would like to introduce Cam Boyd of CCB, Coastal Community Builders, who's the applicant. We also have Eddie Hurre as an architect, Ress Garrison, project engineer. And then Laurie Tamar with Urban Playing Concepts is also here. When we first started out with this project, we submitted a project that was 150 units of senior apartments, and that's shown in the white along Main Street. And then also 90 units of duplex, duplex units. Those are shown in the green. The residents and the neighbors had some concerns about this project. And some of those include that the project was too dense. There was too many units. The homes were too big for the area. There wasn't enough parking. They were concerned about spillover. The two-story duplexes were in contrast with the predominantly one-story buildings along the perimeter. And the houses should be one-story, particularly along the perimeter. And they should be setback further from the property lines to have a little bit more distance. So while this was going on, these comments were being made. Coastal Community Builders was building their vintage ranch project in Orkut. And these are larger lots. They have ADUs on them. And so the feedback that they got for these ADUs was that they were, people really liked them. They, they were very well-received. They thought, wow, you know, I could really live in one of these, especially if I was downsizing. So that's where the impetus for this, this project came about, and this plan. So the proposed project before you this evening, from the original submittal, has 100 less, 98 less units. The bedroom counts have gone significant, down significantly. They're one- and two-bedroom units. The square footage has gone down significantly as well. Parking, Dana alluded to. There's 218 additional parking spaces over what's required by the code. The building heights are all one-story buildings. And the distance to the property lines along the perimeter are about 35 to about 50 feet. This is a slide. It was similar to what Dana showed, but on the top, it shows kind of the elevations of the, of the units. And then on the lower part of the slide, it shows the, the lot layouts. And we worked really closely with staff on these because it is a very unique project. It's very new to Santa Maria. They're smaller lots. But what they do is for a density of this, of this type, you usually have an attached project, like row houses or townhomes that often go up two stories. This provides a, an individual lot with a little bit of private, private open space for, you know, a jacuzzi or a patio. I was really pleased that Ms. Ede showed that one exhibit that showed the possibilities for these, although they're small, that you could still have some privacy in the backyard. Along with all of the common amenities, there'll be a nice amount of both common open space and private open space. They, they come with front yard patios as well. We worked with staff on, on the tree layouts, the lighting layouts, showing them where utilities would be able to be installed. Ms. Ede mentioned that the landscaping, over 30% of landscaping on the site. It exceeds open space requirements. They plan on planting over 270 trees on site. And these exhibits were, were shown, so I won't, I won't go over those with the, the dog park on the left and the clubhouse on the right. And she, she did a great job covering the, the site circulation slide as well. So I don't, I don't think I'll cover any of that. And the rest of the slide is really just images of, of the units themselves and the site amenities. So this is a Plan One, about 712 square feet. And this is a one-bed, one-bath unit. That's in the farm cottage architectural style. This is a Plan Two. Oh, excuse, I think I skipped ahead. That's the same one in a colonial cottage style. And this is the Plan Two, and the two-bed, two-bath, a little over 1,000 square feet. And this is the Plan Three. That one's 1,167 square feet, two-bed, two-bath. And then they also come with different options that residents can, can choose to upgrade, whether it's chimneys or dormers or bay windows. And so it'll provide a little bit more architectural variety along the streetscape. And that, this is the duplex unit with the, the garage facing the interior street and then with the main entry off of the side street. And this is just another perspective of, of the intersection treatment, the landscaping, view of the houses in the back. There's a view of the clubhouse. And then an aerial view of the, the pool area, the clubhouse, and then the cottages in the background. There's the pool area and the cabanas. Fire pit and lounge area. Outdoor seating area. And then more lounge areas and fire pits. So I think hopefully that gives you a good sense of, of the rich amenities that could be provided within the project. And this, this area east of the freeway, it has a scarcity of higher-density and medium-density housing. So this will really add to providing a mix of, of different housing types and, you know, particularly for this needed demographic. It's compatible development to the adjacent neighbors. I think that was one of the reasons why the planning commission recommended approval of this because they saw how, how the applicant worked with the neighbors to really try to have something fit into the context of, of that community there. And it provides medical services really close by with Marion. And then one of the other advantages is that this isn't affordable by design. And so it's, they're smaller units. If, if people wanted to choose to downsize, they then, it then opens up the housing inventory of larger houses for working families. And then just finally, it provides a amenity-rich, gated, secure home ownership housing community for seniors. We've read the staff report, the conditions of approval. We agree with those. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present this project. We're available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Any questions from the council? Ms. Aguilar Hernandez?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Quick question. When we talk about age restriction, this senior, we're talking about 55 and older, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And also regarding the, I know that one of the, the concerns was Jonathan Place Street. There was a, remember that it, there was a moment where there were discussions about having that entrance being used as an entrance to the, to the development, and that's not happening, correct?
That is correct. There is only the main entrance off of Main Street.
And the emergency.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hernandez?
Why is it being limited to 55 and over?
Why is it being limited to 55 and over? That is, for this size of unit, it seems appro, I guess the applicant feels that that would be appropriate for the smaller cottage, one or two persons. This is not a family unit. This is not necessarily a type of community that's designed for children or for large families. And, and I think the, the neighbors appreciate that, so it keeps the, the overall density and population down.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions? Looking this for a public hearing, I have one request to speak, Christian, is it Brocey?
Brose.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I feel like in Santa Maria in general, there is not a lot of senior housing, and this is something that's definitely needed. Speaking for my, for myself, a tree just fell at my mom's house up in Dunsborough, California. So mom is now living with me, and it's going to be a full-time thing now. So having elderly parents, my dad as well, is up in Mount Shasta, California, and they're looking for a new place to snowbird. And something like this, as, as beautiful as what we, what we just saw, I think could be a very good choice for them. Lot safer for them than traveling to Mexico, so that would be great. So yeah, I'm just in favor of this, and I think having more seniors being able to downsize in the area is going to open up those houses for larger families like you just asked about, which I think will be beneficial as well. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will, were you going, were you, did you want to speak on this? Okay, because I was just about ready to close the public hearing. Go ahead, you can speak, turn in your slip. It looks like a vacation, it looks like vacation homes, you'd always be on vacation.
I mean, being on the beach in Mexico is nice.
Which is why I was asking why they're limited to 55 and over.
That's right.
Go, go ahead, you can start.
Good evening, Michael Stolti, MD3 Investments. I'm, you know, a builder, local builder. I'm no way directly associated with this project. You know, but as a, as a local builder, we get to see other products and, and projects that folks do. And, you know, I got worried about this project years ago, and it really piqued my interest. You know, we're demographically going through a big challenge right now. You know, you had baby boomers that came through the eighties, and there was a significant amount of home building that took place then. I believe today we're roughly building about half of the homes per year that we were doing in the eighties, right? And so that is largely this housing crunch that we see. And so we all know that we need to build a lot more homes. And we need it in multiple ways. We need homes for families, but we also need homes for seniors. And my mother is a perfect example of this. She lives in a four-bedroom, quarter-acre home herself, she's single, and she won't let go of it because of Prop 19 and Prop 13. She's not going to move to another state, her family's here. And, you know, I always ask her, what are you doing with this four-bedroom home? And she says, well, there, there isn't a smaller home that I like locally. You know, nobody's really building smaller homes that work for me. She likes a nicer home. And so when I heard about this project, I was like, wow, I think this is really neat that CCB is doing this. And sure enough, having seen the elevations of the project, you know, it is a smaller project, but I would argue it's exactly what we need right now. We need smaller lots, you know, we're building apartments and things like that for younger folks, but what we see with seniors a lot from our demographics as builders is that they generally want their own yard, and they want their own home to own. And so that's exactly what this project is. It's an infill project, you know, they're asking for, you know, slightly smaller setbacks and things like that, but that's exactly how you deliver this type of project for this community. So I just wanted to, you know, put my own stamp of approval on it, if that means anything. As another builder, I'm a big fan of this project, and I think they've done a great job designing it.
Thank you. So I will close the public hearing. Do I have any a motion and a second on this?
Well, I think we're going to have to do four, because we need to adopt a resolution to...
I got a comment.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Escobedo.
Before we jump into that huge, of course, I would like to disclose that I've met a couple of times with the developers, and I'm glad these kind of projects and the way that they approach it is, it was, it was very positive. They are open, they were open to, to have conversations, to make adjustments, to really listen to the people in the neighborhood. So I think that's a, that's the way to do it. I think it's a building that relationship with the people that will be affected. At that time, I bring, I brought up actually a couple, maybe a couple of council members, I believe, in terms of traffic, the traffic that will bring, but when you're talking about a senior home, senior residence, it's not that they just, you know, they're going up there, driving all crazy. It's a calm life, so that was one of my concerns, especially since having a high school right around the corner. So I appreciate that. And also the, you know, this is for sale, so I think it's a, that's also something positive that this developer put up there, because, you know, even though the apartments are going to be for rent, the idea of also being able to, to let that, let them buy it, own it, take care of it, and eventually pass it over to the next generation, it's something that is valuable. Or even move to another place, you know, it's so many, you can do so many things, so I just want to bring that up and, and be actually, if there's no other comments, move the motion.
We have two motions.
But if you have a motion, I'll second that.
Okay. Well, that's what I was saying, there's four separate, it's not just one, so the recommendation... It can be done in one motion.
Can we do the one?
It can be done in one? Yes. No, because we have to do the negative deck, the land use, the map, the ordinance amending, so I think it's cleaner if we do it one by one.
Do you want to do it one by one?
So I'm going to move that we adopt resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program for the general plan land use map amendment zone change, and the tentative tract map and plan development permit for Belcrest senior residences located at 1571 East Main Street.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on recommendation one. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
I move that we adopt a resolution amending the general plan land use policy map for the 14.43 acres from LWDR four, which is single-family lower-density residential to medium-density residential.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And that we recommend that we introduce for first reading, continue to a future meeting and ordinance amending the official zoning map for the 14.43 acres located at 1571 East Main Street from plan development, single-family residential to plan development medium-density residential zone district.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And I move that we adopt a resolution approving the tentative tract map, tract 6040, STR 2022-0007.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Second.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And the move that we adopt a resolution approving plan development permit, PD 2022-0008.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Now for the regular business for the 2025 meeting schedule for the City Council and City of Santa Maria boards, commissions, and committees, to be presented by City Manager Dave Rollins.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're asking for the adoption of the resolution approving the 2025 meeting schedule for City Council and the City of Santa Maria boards, commissions, and committees. I imagine that all meetings, the local legislative bodies shall be open to the public, except as permitted by state law. This includes City Council, the Block Grants Advisory Committee, Library Board of Trustees, Measure Use Citizens Oversight Committee, Planning Commission, and Recreation and Parks Commission are indicated in the 2025 regular meeting schedule. That was included in your packet. We've also had discussion among staff and some members of City Council to ask if City Councils might be interested in entertaining a summer recess, if they would like to do that. Staff would recommend July 15th meeting and the August 19th meeting. If we do two, if it's just one, then recommend the July 15th meeting. I know it has been done here in the past. That is, this is something that's done in many jurisdictions in many cities throughout the state to allow time for travel for families during the summertime. So that's our presentation for tonight, and we'll listen to your direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
No. I, I wouldn't mind to go in for the, for the summer.
Summer recess?
Yeah, because we generally skip the, the first week of July and we go to the Fourth of July and in August as well, so I would move that we adopt the new schedule.
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Mr. Carries. Next would be your report by City Manager David Rollins.
Well, thank you, there's a couple of things I want to thank you. Happy to be here at the Inter-Navy for two weeks. I've had a lot of discussions with the public, with the department heads, made about five surprise visits so far to the fire departments and other organizations, and watched our employees doing some work at the parks, and met them. An amazing group of people we have here within the organization and its community, City Council. Thank you again for your trust in me, and congratulations to Mayor and councilmembers on your elections to here tonight. Just for the public, city offices will be closed on Wednesday, December 25th for Christmas, and also on Wednesday, January 1st for the New Year's holiday. An upcoming meeting in January, a couple items we'll be looking to have on the agenda of the presentation from the Chamber of Commerce, their annual report, outside board appointments, annual appointments of the various boards, commissions, and committees, formation of the Santa Barbara County Wine Business Improvement District, presentation on the encampment response, potentially the mayor pro tem selection, and also a closed session regarding negotiations. And that's all I have for tonight, and wish everybody happy holidays.
Thank you. So we'll have the oral reports of council members. Go ahead, do you want to start?
On November 21st, I attended the Chief Snyder's retirement celebration. On November 24th, I attended the basket brigade where we assembled Thanksgiving baskets, and then we got in our cars and delivered them to the families, which was really great to see the kids come out and receive their baskets full of food. I attended Willie Galvane's funeral. As you guys know, he was a big pillar, fought some hard fights for a very long time. I attended the Econ Alliance Board meeting on December 6th. I went to the Santa Maria Legal Professionals Luncheon. On the 7th, I attended also the tree lighting, which was a lot of fun, and the choir was there. December 7th, I was in the Parade of Lights, which was also a great event. On the 7th and 10th, I attended the badge pitting ceremony for the new officers that we hired, and they all looked so young, and they all enjoy playing video games, which is really funny. December 11th, I attended the Public Works Barbecue, which was a great event. On December 12th, I went to the Women Lawyers Association meeting, and then I also attended December 15th, Klein Dance Christmas Program Presentation at Ethel Pope Auditorium. And I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Okay. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the November 21st, I attended the Chief Snyder's standoff luncheon. Also attended the railroad project info session with the Planning Commission on the same On the 24th, I participated in the Thanksgiving basket assembly. Shout out to, to Subway for putting that together, and it's, it's, it was a really, it was a relief. Mind-blowing event, you know, come, having, having the community to have the opportunity to have some, something on the table, have something to eat during those difficult times, that's just, feels, it feels good to be part of that effort. Also, I attended the lighting ceremony. Also, I met with the city manager, and that's, and the Parade of Lights, which was a blast, and, you know, it was a, it was a fun day. And actually, the weather was actually pretty good, so that helped. Thank you.
Thank you. On the 19th, I attended the Marion Foundation Board meeting, and later that day, Allen Hancock College Student Health Center grand opening. On the 21st, I attended SBK monthly board meeting and Chief Snyder's standoff luncheon. On the 1st of December, the California Alliance of Local Elections meeting. On the 5th, I attended the special APCD board meeting. On the 6th, I attended the community tree lighting, and on the 7th, the Santa Maria Parade of Lights. And this evening, I would like to close our meeting. We, we've had several people that have, that have left Santa Maria, have passed away, and one of them is Willie Galvane, who is a civic leader, who's given so much to Santa Maria. He was, grew up, I guess, in Texas, but he gave a lot and advocated so much for the veterans in our community. And, and I know when I first was doing things here in Santa Maria, it seems like every place I went, Willie Galvane was always there, and we certainly appreciated what he brought to Santa Maria. And married a local girl from Guadalupe, and settled here in Santa Maria and raised their family here. And also, I'd like to say, Mike Miranda, we're going to miss you. He was one of our police officers. He served on different nonprofit boards in the City of Santa Maria. Everybody seemed to know Mike, not that he gave them a ticket all the time, but he had this, this wonderful laugh and this presence about him, because he was, he was a big guy. He told really, really good stories, and I got to know Mike very well because he lived across the street from my parents and down a couple of houses. But we're going to miss these people in our community because they've given so much to our community. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.